Mr. Combs.
Present.
Mr. Henchy.
Present.
Mr. Luther.
Present.
Ms. Nelson.
Present.
Ms. Reclu. Mr. Stone.
Present.
Mr. Washington. Mr. West. Seven council members present, one absent.
Thank you. Would you say, uh, pledge for us, please, sir?
Would you stand with me, please? Face the flag. Attention, salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Privilege, sir.
Okay, we'll have comments from visitors. If somebody wants to, uh, make a comment, you'll have three minutes and please give us your name and address. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on. We have, uh, two proclamations tonight. Fortunately for them and unfortunately for us at the city. Brian, you'll be the first.
Well, I'm wrong. My campaign, you're good guys for coming down.
Okay.
You're nine o'clock. Oh, we ready for.
Kyle has put together a book here. So it could take us a while to get through this. Proclamation for the appreciate for the, your appreciation or our appreciation. Uh, whereas on the occasion of the retirement of Assistant City Engineer Richard King Elson Rath. That's your boss back there. From the employment of the city of Fulton after thirty-eight years, ten months and six days, it is proper that the city record an expression of its grateful appreciation of his faithful and exemplary service. And I can't say that enough. Whereas Richard has diligently served the city of Fulton starting on July the twenty-ninth nineteen eighty-five as a engineer tech one, followed by promotions to tech two, tech three, and ultimately Assistant City Engineer on May thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. And whereas Richard's can-do personality, work ethic, expertise and ability to relate to all allows him to guide both leadership and labor. And whereas Richard's combination of engineering, surveying, practical construction skills go unmatched. His ability to see the whole picture allows him to take a project from cradle to grave. And whereas Richard literally addresses everything and every department of the city. His duties for the city have included locksmith, building maintenance, cemetery sexton, inventory manager, floodplain manager, planning and zoning specialist, property rights expert, natural gas coordinator, traffic signal operator, census and address manager, building commissioner, surveyor, and of course, lead engineer. And whereas, uh, Richard has utilized his profound engineering mind to help complete numerous projects throughout every department, making him an invaluable asset to the city. And whereas Richard is a true leader, his nickname, the King, was earned, not given. His dedication to his work is undeniable and commitment to public service has made a huge impact. And now therefore, I, Steve Myers, Mayor of the city of Fulton, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of our community, extend our sincere and grateful appreciation to Richard Elson Rath for his many years of loyal service to this community. We wish to convey our heartfelt congratulations and best wishes to Richard and Bessie for much success and happiness in the upcoming years. Richard? Thank you for your show.
Keep it brief, Kyle, keep it brief.
Hey, I, I have to keep it brief. There's not enough words to express. You know, there's not the words. You know, it's just, it's, uh, I, I might need it. Richard, this is, this is a, a token of the city's appreciation. Uh, shows your plaque on it. Obviously, we got, we got the king slid in there. And, uh, you know, we joke about that in the office and, uh, but it's really not a joke. I mean, if, uh, if I got a question, I come to Richard. If somebody, it doesn't matter who it is. Could be Courtney, could be anybody. And, uh, that's the way it's been since I got here. Um, twenty years ago, I was asked, I came in as, as the project engineer at that time and I was asked, uh, okay, you're gonna lead Richard. And then we had a gentleman named Brad Hammond here at the time. And, uh, you're kinda gonna tell them what to do. Thank God I was smart enough to keep my mouth shut long enough to realize that they were gonna really teach me and mentor me on, on what to do and how to do it. Uh, Richard's been everything, uh, to me professionally. And, uh, and I do mean that. I mean, he's, he's not, not just me, but, but, uh, the engineering staff and all the other departments that he touches. It is, it is really amazing. It's been a, it's been a huge privilege.
Do you have anything you'd like to say, Richard?
Well, I'd say that, uh, over the thirty-nine years of being here, done numerous projects and, um, one thing it takes to do these projects is for people to get along and people, the right people to make the decisions. And so in that, I would like to thank all the city councils that I've worked for, the mayors, the administrators, the superintendents, utilities, engineers. Without all of us getting along, a lot of these projects wouldn't have got done. So I wanna thank all of you. Thank you.
Okay, proclamation and recognition and appreciation. Whereas on the occasion of the retirement of Fire Engineer Brian Schmidt from the employee of the city of Fulton Fire Department after eighteen years, nine months and one day. It seems like it was only yesterday. It is proper that the city record an expression of its grateful appreciation to his faithful and exemplary service as a firefighter in the city of Fulton. And whereas Brian has conscientiously served the city of Fulton, Missouri, commencing on August twenty-ninth, two thousand and five, as a firefighter and later promoted to Fire Engineer on February the eleventh, two thousand and eight. And whereas throughout his service, he has shown true professionalism and dependability in his duties, earning him respect through his hard work and dedication. And whereas as a firefighter, he has engaged in one of the most hazardous occupations in this United States. And at many, any time during, uh, any emergency, he could be called upon to sacrifice his life for another. Now therefore, I, Steve Myers, Mayor of the city of Fulton, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of our community, extend our utmost appreciation, sincerest gratitude for Brian for his many years of loyal service to our community. Brian, thank you very much.
Uh, Brian, we also have a plaque for you here. Uh, I really appreciate serving with you. It's been an honor, serve with you. Uh, you brought a lot of knowledge with you when you came here. Uh, you've taught a lot of people stuff over the years. Appreciate working with you. You've, uh, definitely been an honor. And we have a plaque for you as well. Uh, it says, in recognition of outstanding dedication and service to the Fulton Fire Department, its members and the community it serves, you wore your badge well. That's a true statement.
Anything you'd say, just like the council over here's for their support of the fire department and continued support for them. Uh, there's a lot of things that still need to be done. And I just don't, the continued support you give them goes on. So thank you for all the years of service.
Okay, moving along. Uh, we'll have, uh, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Councilman Stone, would you like to read that?
Yes, in the consent agenda, we have the city council minutes for April ninth, the city council minutes for April twenty-third. We have a request for, uh, services and for use of facilities for the Fulton Street Fair, the Kingdom Pilots Association Pancake Breakfast and Fly-In on September twenty-first, the appointment of Valerie Seibacher to the Public Safety Commission, Independence Day Parade, Fourth of July, the Second Annual Airport Summer Luncheon on June twenty-second, and a Juneteenth event sponsored by the Human Rights Commission on June the fifteenth. Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, we have a, a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Very well. Okay, now we'll have the presentation of the, uh, April DOA report.
Thank you, Mayor. So as you all have seen, April was a very busy month for us. Uh, we were right in the midst of spring and a lot of projects kicking off. Um, I would just say we have a lot of our staff members here with us tonight that can answer questions for you. We also have some that are still away on a long holiday weekend and we're envious of them. Um, but of course, if we don't have them here tonight, we can get that answer to you after the fact as well. So we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions?
I, I make a motion to approve the DOA report.
Very well.
Dustin Doherty, City Fulton CFO. Uh, City Fulton recorded three months of sales tax in two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, collections are up point four percent from two thousand and twenty-three and use taxes up through, uh, forty-three point two percent from two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, does anyone have any questions about the, uh, operating statements?
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Very well. There is no further questions. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Dustin. Uh, we have no unfinished business at this time. Uh, we'll go into new business. And we have with us a representative from the VFW tonight. Richard, you wanna come forward, please?
Yes, my name is Richard Vaughn. I live at fourteen sixteen Kingswood Drive in the Herring subdivision. I'm here representing the VFW and to ask for the council's support this year again for the fireworks display. Uh, if you have any other questions. We're using the same company that we used last year. It's Astro Enterprises. I've also discussed it with the fire chief and the chief of police and they're on board and have, have their people there, whatever, whatever we seen the need. They, they said they, they would support us.
They still plan on having the country club?
Yes, it will be at the country club. It's gonna be a little different this year, except last year where they used one firing range, they're gonna have one main firing range and four smaller ones. So the smaller fireworks will be a little more visible than they were last year.
Oh, okay.
Looks like the weather's gonna be much better this year for the two.
It looks it right now. I hope it holds out, but.
How much are you guys trying to raise?
Uh, the total bill for this year, actually, they're letting us, uh, have it for the same price they did last year. Be fourteen thousand dollars.
And where are you in that fundraising?
Actually, we just started the fundraising, so we're not very far along. Uh, we've been out, we've already reached out to several businesses. We've not really collected money. They're, they're all taking it back to their people and, and asking. We have collected quite a bit from just private donors that come into the VFW and give money. But other than any major collections, we haven't made any. If there's no other questions, uh,
Thank you, Richard.
Take my seat. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
I'd like to make a motion to pledge twenty-five hundred dollars of our special projects funds towards the fireworks display. And then also the opportunity for the VFW to come back to us at a later date, uh, depending upon their fundraising needs.
I'll second that.
Very well. Do we have any further questions?
It was twenty-five. And we didn't, we didn't have. Hopefully we could do that again.
Okay. All right, seeing no further questions, all in favor of, uh, the motion to give the VFW twenty-five hundred dollars with, um, with the understanding they could come back if they need to. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Very good, thank you. Now we'll have, uh, Tamara Totition from the, uh, Chamber of Commerce. Tamara's the Chief Executive Officer and she will present, um, will be presenting her organization's efforts over the past three months, over six months.
Well, it's
Year.
The end of May, almost, so five months.
Yeah, well, you, you were gonna be here last month.
Yeah, I was coming last month, but, yeah. So I've updated so we could get to all the way to the end of May. Well, thanks for having me. I'll be brief, but I wanna be efficient and make sure that you all are completely aware of the things that we've been working on. Um, can y'all see the presentation? I mean, it's, it's up, but then the thing is, oh, there we go. All right. So, um, as you're aware, the Callaway Chamber of Commerce has a strategic plan that we follow that guides all of our work. Uh, one of the things that I do want to mention, uh, when you look up on the screen, down on the second row in the middle, you're gonna see a, a new number seven, and that is tourism. Um, effective June first, uh, tourism will be under the Chamber of Commerce umbrella. Uh, and that is because Renee Graham, the Director of Tourism, announced her retirement. And so the Tourism Board of Directors wanted to see, um, this person who they replaced Renee with kind of supported on a day-to-day basis. And so kind of a natural fit was for that to come underneath the Chamber umbrella. And, um, since that time, we had, uh, actually went to start looking for somebody that would do the, kind of the marketing and tourism. And I'm happy to announce and also kinda sad at the same time, but Amy Books, our, uh, Marketing and Special Events Coordinator for the Callaway Chamber of Commerce, has decided to take the tourism and marketing manager role. So she'll be rolling into that and then we will be, we're actually, uh, seeking an events person now. So, um, you'll start hearing when I come and report to you a little bit about tourism and the things that we're doing to help support tourism in our community. Um, so tonight I really wanted to talk about a, a couple of things and it seems kinda lengthy, but most of it's pictures, so just rest easy. So economic development, workforce development, how we're supporting our entrepreneurs, the local lemon, the C E C Conference for two thousand and twenty-four, the Junior Leadership Callaway Launch Program, and then our, of course, our upcoming events. So with economic development, uh, currently right now, um, year-to-date, we have worked, uh, seven, uh, projects or R F Is and those are the ones that come directly from Missouri Partnership. And then we have worked six non-traditional and those are ones that just come directly to us, so thirteen in total. I really do appreciate the, uh, actually the Director of Administration and Darrell Dunlap for their support. Every time we get an R F I, they are so quick to help respond with the information that I need so that I can submit to Missouri Partnership. The lead time on those are sometimes one to two days. And those R F Is can be anywhere from one page to sixty pages. So it is really important that timeliness, that they get back and say, yes, this is something that the city can support or no, we can't submit for this project. So I really do appreciate that. Um, so in May, I had the opportunity to attend the Missouri Economic Development Council's Insight Missouri event that they had in Kansas City. Um, I actually sit on the board for M E D C, which is a great honor for our community to have somebody seated at that table. Uh, but Insight Missouri is kind of a intimate, small group of individuals that they have come in from the, the state to talk about, you know, the problems, issues, R F Is, et cetera. Um, and get to sit down with actual site consultants. So we had five site consultants that worked for some very prominent, uh, locations across the country that we had, had time to actually interact with. Um, they talked about navigating the R F I landscape and what they're really looking for. And we asked them really tough questions that they had to kinda take a seat back and said, we'll get, get back to you on that answer. Um, addressing the workforce issues and then what consultants are actually looking for in communities. One thing that was kind of, uh, interesting to me out of the five consultants, all five of them said that they had only worked like one project in the state of Missouri ever. So we wanna see that happen more often, if we possibly can. Okay, so we're gonna restart. Let's see if it will go to the next note. Okay. So, uh, we just got back last week from the, uh, two thousand and twenty-four I C S recom- So we just got back last week from the 2024 ICS Recom Conference in Las Vegas. As you can see on the picture on the right, people are coming back to this conference. In 2021, it was kind of dead. People were not there, but we had a booth and we were there representing, but the halls are getting packed again, and there are a lot of organizations there that I haven't seen in in the past. So that was exciting to me to be able to make contact with them. So I'll keep y'all posted if I hear anything or any leads from our contacts out there. For workforce development, so we have a lot of things that are going on there. Right now, on our website, we've got 53 job postings. We're working on the Career Day for the Westminster and William Wood students that will be held in the fall. We're holding workforce roundtable discussions, and I'll tell you about those on the next slide. And we did our Meet Your Future Employer Day for our high school students, and we had 19 employers in attendance, as well as the city of Fulton, and we thank you all so much for being there. One of the things that we have started about a year ago, no, two years ago, it's called Decision Day. And so you may have seen where people, kids are signing up to play volleyball for this school or football. Well, you know, we feel like workforce is really important in that aspect, too. So some of the kids are signing up and committing to go to college, but this is groups of kids that are committing to go directly into the workforce as soon as they graduate. So we go out, you can see Kendall there, they get T-shirts, and they are celebrating the fact that they're going to go directly into the workforce here in Callaway County. We did this with other schools, but I showcased Fulton because I'm presenting to you guys tonight. Workforce development roundtable discussions, so we hold those every single month. Our next one is recruitment and retention, and Missouri Enterprises is going to do that. We have a lot of people signed up for that class, so if you know any employer that's interested in that, please send them our way. So next, supporting our entrepreneurs. And so as you can see over on the right, in 2022, we, at the end of the year, we had counseled a total of 60 businesses. That's anywhere from their business startup to their succession planning or anything in between. In 2023, we ended with 88 clients that we counseled. This year, year-to-date, we have counseled 30 businesses so far. So I hope we're on track to beat that 88 because I'm very competitive, as you all know. Trainings, we continue to do trainings. One of the last ones we did was our succession planning. We had 13 businesses in attendance. I don't know if you're aware of this or not, but about 65% of small businesses in our community are starting to get into that succession timeframe, where they're going to decide if they're going to retire, or if they're going to keep working in their small business. And one of the things that we want to do is get in front of that, and that is start talking about their succession plan, because if they want to sell their business, we want to help them do that, because we want to keep it open. The local women, so this is an all-time favorite for everyone. This is going to be presented by the Central Bank. It's going to be held July 29th through August 3rd. We already have, I think, five or six kids that are already signed up, and we haven't even put it out there yet. We will be holding a parent meeting this year on Thursday, July 11th at 5:30 PM, and this is so the parents know what to expect the week of the local women. Next, connecting entrepreneurial communities. So as a reminder, last September, we were awarded the Connecting Entrepreneurial Community Site for the 2024 conference. So that conference will be held on September 17th through the 19th. We are expecting 150 to 200 people in our community. The class locations downtown have been selected. They are highlighting those businesses on social media in partnership with MU. So MU Extension is highlighting them as well as the Chamber. We have some hotel blocks at Baymont and the Holiday Inn. We're planning to do a kickoff reception on September 17th. We are hoping and still talking and discussing doing some sort of block party on September 18th. The purpose for that block party is we want 150 to 200 people to stay in our downtown area. We want them to shop and eat. We want them to spend all of their money while they're here. Right? So that's the purpose. And then, of course, we'll have some keynote speakers on the, on September 18th and 19th. Those will be held at the Playhouse. It'll kind of be our main location. So exciting news, and you may have seen some of this, but we have our Junior Leadership Callaway that is launching. It's our inaugural class of 2025. We have eight students that are going to be participating, and this will mirror our adults program. I wanted to throw in real quick, I know this was in March, but thank you all so much for hosting our March Business Breakfast. I hear it was a fantastic turnout, and I'm glad y'all enjoyed it. And I heard that it went over a little bit on the nine o'clock timeframe, but that's okay. We're fine with that. We like to be punctual, though, as y'all are aware. Golf tournament, so that is going to be Friday, June 14th. You all have two teams that are available to the city of Fulton. So if you all want to play, Courtney can help us with the team, her and Kathy, let us know if anybody plans on playing. It will be held at Tanglewood, and it will kick off at 9:00 AM. We are having Callaway County forums on June 20th at the Callaway Senior Center, and then July 18th at the Holt Summit Municipal Building, and those will be from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. And these are for any candidate that is running for office in the August 6th primary election that has somebody that is running against them. So those are who those forums will be held for. And then lastly, we have Leadership Callaway commencement, the 2025 Class Reveal, and the inaugural Junior Leadership Class Reveal is going to be held on Thursday, June 6th at 5:00 PM at the Playhouse. And so we will do all things leadership on June 6th. We hope that some of y'all from the council can attend. We have a graduate from the council that's going to actually be participating in that, and they have a really exciting class project that they're going to talk about in their presentation, so we hope you're there. Reminder, golf tournament, and then please keep in mind that our Teachers' Appreciation Breakfast is going to be August 15th, and it will not be a breakfast this year. It's going to be an afternoon event that will start at 1:00 PM at Westminster College, and Casey Wolf will be the speaker for that event this year. Any questions? What? Apparently, he's a keynote speaker. So our teachers are actually really excited about it.
No questions? You did a great job.
Okay, well, thank y'all so much.
I'm privileged to attend those board meetings every month, and I've seen all of these things unfold almost weekly, if not monthly. And I know of a lot of other things that are in store that are great things, going to be great things for the city of Fulton and the Chamber.
Yeah.
So it's a pleasure to work with you, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Okay, number C is consideration by council to officially excuse Councilman Luther, as needed, from his council duties through August 2024. Is that pretty much what you need?
Actually, I was going to, first off, Mr. Mayor, maybe just see if we can make it more general. Some of you may be aware, my family's on a medical journey, if you will, that we're going to be battling for at least the next six to eight months with one of our children. But I don't know the future. Obviously, tonight was a surprise blessing to be able to be here in person, so I was able to get here in the nick of time. But maybe if we can even change the wording to just allow lenience per Section 3.6 Bravo 5, however that may fall, because I can't tell the future, because our current journey could take us out to October, November. We don't know really for sure at this time, so I'm definitely open to any consideration on the wording that allows some flexibility, if you will, for.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make that motion that we allow for flexibility and excusals for Councilman Luther for many of his council duties that he's unable to perform between now and the end of October with PEC.
Mayor, did you second that?
I seconded.
Okay. All right. Do we have any other questions? And I think, Brad, if we get to the October and you need more time, that's not an issue either. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Very well. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. We'll move on to council, liaison, and board commissions. Councilman Henchy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take a moment to provide some updates regarding two constituent concerns following conversations with the Director of Administration, Courtney Doyle. The first pertains to improper use of yard waste bins at the city warehouse, where individuals have been depositing large branches and brushes rendering them inaccessible to others. We believe that this may stem from commercial entities dumping yard waste, and we will be putting out reminders that the bins are for residential use only. The citizens can also place yard waste at their curb as long as branches do not exceed 3.5 feet and are tied in bundles, so that the solid waste staff can pick them up. The second concern is involves the current condition of the golf course paths at Tanglewood. The city is currently formulating plans for cart path repairs and plans to place the repairs out to bid later this year in order to formulate a feasible approach. I would like to thank the individuals who are actively collaborating on the development of these plans. The DOA and the department heads have been working hard on this to correct this situation, and I really appreciate all their help. Also, Public Safety Committee. We had a Public Safety Committee meeting on the 15th, May 24th. We talked about various things, parking, bridges, ditch maintenance, splash pad safety. The next meeting will be on the 27th of June 24th. And then one last thing is, I'd like to say the cicadas are healthy and thriving.
Beautiful song.
And that'll be all.
Okay, thank you. Councilman West is not able to be here tonight. Councilwoman Recul?
Yes. First of all, I attended the Public Safety Board meeting again. It was one of all kinds of, it was a wonderful meeting. Lots of people attended. We had an awful lot of issues, of course. Mr. Henchy hit the bases on a lot of things. Yes, we do have a new next meeting, and I do appreciate the opportunity to get involved with so many different areas of the city that have come together to solve some problems that we have with certain things. And that's basically us. Thank you for allowing us to, me to be part of this. No more concerns then.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman Stone?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Historic Preservation Commission had a scheduled meeting in the month of May, but unfortunately, we did not have a quorum in order to hold a voting meeting, so we have rescheduled that. We meet every other month, but we're going to have a special meeting June 12th at 1:00 PM in the Executive Conference Room. All members from the city and the city council, as well as the public, are invited to attend that meeting at any time. The month of May is Historic Preservation Month. You'll notice blue and white signs throughout our city, and I encourage you to drive around, look in our neighborhoods, look for those signs, and if you know the person that lives there, thank them for being a part of our Historic Preservation Program. We have historic districts, but that's not what those signs represent. Those signs actually represent that that individual property owner has applied and met the qualifications for historic home here in our town. So thank them when you see them. And I don't have any other concerns this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilman Luther?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong, I haven't missed anything with the Airport Advisory Boards, if I'm aware of them. Thank you. Besides that, really appreciation, Mr. Mayor. Ever since we got the phone call about one of our children with the medical journey we're currently on, I guess I'll leave it at that, the amount of outreach from this community, from this council has been just unreal. Just can't put into words how blessed we are to live in such an amazing community, from not only, you know, the city itself, the fire department, even my work, Ameren, family, friends, just, it's unbelievable, the amount of love and compassion in this community. So thank you for everyone and all your support as we will continue on this journey, and we will be successful, but it will be a long battle, and definitely keep some prayers in the wood, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Combs?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Plan and Zoning Commission has not met. We will meet again on June 11th. We had to move that meeting that was originally scheduled for tonight, and I have no concerns this evening.
Thank you. Councilman Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. First, you were meeting, I know we had a meeting, but I went in and took ten, could you give us some conclusion on that?
Park Board last met on May 2nd. The main topic of discussion was 2025 capital improvements, parks capital improvements. Lot of ideas and opinions shared. I presented the board with a long list of ideas. The input that they gave that night is going to be used to kind of prioritize that list, shorten it, and eventually bring it to the council for approval.
Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate that. The other concern, I know I heard this, I heard this a few months ago, Mary brought to attention the council. Council, what I like to begin every, every, every two weeks, but not, they haven't changed since so many years. So anyway, I think that's something to consider in the future.
Yeah, I think you're probably correct. Councilwoman Nelson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There was a public utility board, and I see Ms. Anna's there over there. Do you want to come up and tell us about the award?
All right, we were nominated for the Medium Facility Biosolids Plant of the Year, and we received this back in March, and I just, you know, I wasn't able to attend the meeting, but here's our plaque for Biosolids. Two years ago, we were also the small community, or small community plant, so this is kind of nice to get another recognition from the whole state of Missouri, so.
Thank you, Anna. And then, Daryl, I'm going to have you go ahead and come up to and tell about the water-led service inventory.
Okay. Let me talk a little bit about the turbine first, if that's okay. Myso did have their capacity auction, and unfortunately, Missouri, in the fall and spring, blew out to $719 a megawatt hour. It's been about $40 in the past. So the mayor and Lauren and I went to Tulsa to thank SWPA because they stepped up to the plate and got Seigston back into the portal where we could count it as capacity. And, you know, that was, that was worth $1.3 million to the city of Fulton, so that was definitely worth a trip to Tulsa to thank those folks. Your turbine, it looks like it was worth about $1.7 million. So, and it is running. We got it started Thursday. We got it started Thursday for the June runs. We do have a little bit of metal in the filters, but it's coming out. We think it was because of the pump. We hope it's not a bearing on the turbine. So that's, that's good. It did end up costing us a little over $600,000, the auction did. And us and a few other cities are asking MISO questions of some of their assumptions of the transfer cap. Rush Island goes down in the fall, so that was short Rush Island. So the spring and the fall really blew out on us. And then, the other thing we talked about was the lead service inventory, and as all good companies do, when somebody wins an award, you give them more work. So I'm going to ask Anna to come back up here and talk about the lead service.
Before Darryl leaves, I'd like to also say the reason why we're catching these problems and issues is because he's staying on top of the issues, and he's doing an outstanding job of representing our city.
Okay, thank you. And while she's here, I'll brag in front of her. She's, she's starting to help on Sykeson. That was a bad one to throw her into because that was, I think we had 700 and some emails over Sykeson. But the plant, go ahead and give the plant update too, while you're up here.
A plant update, okay. Well, can we start with lead service inventory?
All right, lead service inventory. We reached out to Bartlett and West. They're a company down, engineering firm down in Jeff City to kind of help navigate through the lead service inventory. So we will need, as a city, before October 16th of 2024, we will need to submit as much information as we can of our service lines, what they're made of, if there, is there, if there are any lead services. If we find any, then we'll have to make a plan to be replacing those. But it is on the city side that we will be replacing if we find any. According to Dave and Darryl, they don't believe there is many. But we have to inventory all the houses. So in that, we will take what we have in our GIS documents and service records. And Bartlett, Bartlett and West said that they could compile that and then give us a list of the ones that we need to assess. So if it's built after 1994? I know, but 89, but the 94 and above is, we absolutely, I mean, we only have to, I mean, it's already, it's clear. 1986 to 89, or before that, is a possibility of having lead services. It was banned in 86, but, but it could have been into 89 because of, of stock.
No, you're not talking about just total lead. You're talking about like soldering and things like that.
Mm-hmm, yep. So Bartlett and West would have a form that we would compile, which is off of the Missouri's website also for the information that they need. Everyone in the state, everyone in the country is doing this lead service inventory, and it'll be due October 16th. So if we, and we're looking at sending out letters to the people, the residents, and having them fill out the form themselves with a note saying, if you have any questions, give us a call, and we can set up a time that we can come and look at them. We may have to go door to door and look at some of them inside the houses. And then also, on the water department side, they're going to be looking in the meter pits and looking on both sides of the meter pit to see if there's any lead service lines. So, any questions on lead service lines?
The utility board is recommending that we do partner with Bartlett and West to conduct that survey.
So then, my plant upgrade, going to the wastewater side of it. We have partnered with Burns McDonald, and they are, we're, have got, you know, our numbers pretty much compiled. We're going to be going down to DNR to discuss the SRF loans, grants, and things that we can qualify for. We've looked into our bonds, and we've looked into what we have in our capacity, what we can afford before loans and grants and things like that. And so we're going down there next week to discuss with them completing the application and whether we will qualify for the, the grants, which are, the deadline is March 1st, and then they're approved after that. That does not mean we have to wait till March 1st to start any of this stuff. We, we can start some of the preliminary engineering beforehand. So then, we're not waiting for that. So we can go ahead and start planning what we're doing. We're looking at optimizing my plant that I have. So we're going to be changing some of the air settings so that I can turn air blowers on and off. We're going to be adding some meters to, so that I can know when to turn off on a meters. Adding some mixers, and then adding a chemical phosphorus removal as well. So that's what we're looking at. We're going to have to do to meet our DNR requirements for this first phase. And hopefully, after this first phase, we will do stream studies and be able to get off this impairment of the stream of Stinson Creek. And we won't have to do the final one, which is millions and millions and millions of dollars that I don't want to have to spend.
So I just want to say I have to laugh a little bit because every time we meet, Anna's ready to go out there and, you know, she's shovel-ready. And so you've got to tether her back just a little bit. But I do have to just brag on her for a moment. Both, both Anna and her team, you know, they're doing an excellent job for you guys out there every single day, and Darryl as well. There's a lot of time and effort that goes into what they're doing, and, and I really appreciate Burns and McDonald's help to help get us to this point as well. So, yeah, Anna is chomping at the bit for that meeting with DNR, and I'm excited for her, and we're going to go and explore all of our options so that we can get this moving as quickly as possible. And then again, on the, on the lead service, as you mentioned, Councilwoman Nelson, the utility board recommended that we move forward with Bartlett and West. That is on tonight's agenda. And the community can expect to see some things on social media, mailers, and other forms of communication coming out very soon about that project.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. I know you've been working hard on this project, and I thought she was going to get, we had a meeting last week, and I thought, I thought she was going to get the four or five Burns McDonald guys out there to start, to start digging and, and go for the, the new project. But I think they avoided that.
I also love that it's your plant. You take ownership of it, which I think is fantastic.
Councilwoman, do you have anything further?
No concerns tonight.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Washington, I think, does have one more thing.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. I would, I would come up and on our road to the dinner tonight. Demolition is something I would read me on.
Yes, Kyle Bremer, City Engineer. Thanks, Councilman Washington. Yes, finally, some good news when it comes to the demo project. You should, should start seeing some social media out there on our demo projects. It's finally been, we're allowed to advertise it. So it's on the street, and it, we will be receiving bids June 20th, I believe. So we're excited about that. It's been a long, painful process to finally get to this point. So, yes, June 20th, we should start, we should get some bids and start seeing some action this year, so.
Okay. Director, do you have anything further? I might add a little bit to what Darryl said about our trip to Tulsa. We, the second night there, Lauren and Darryl and I, I think, slipped in our clothes. Okay, we'll move on to resolutions. Resolution 3540. Councilman Henchy, would you read that, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3540, Asphalt Contract with Christian Construction Company. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with Christian Construction Company of Kingdom City, Missouri, for asphalt overlay and cold milling, Project COF 24-04, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3540 at this council meeting.
Second.
Okay, very well. Do you want to discuss this, or Kyle?
Yeah, I would just say, kidding, Kyle, if you want to come on up. You have a list of streets and a memo in your packet. If you guys have any questions specifically on this, the next few resolutions are going to do with asphalt overlay, micro-surfacing, and chip seal. So tis the season, please feel free to ask any questions. Kyle, if you could maybe hit really quickly on how you establish those street lists?
Yeah, so we, we select the asphalt, micro-surface, and chip seal streets. The way we do that is we go out, look at the street conditions. We also look at what are the utility, utility conditions in the right of way underneath the street, and also the traffic volume that those streets carry. So from, from those basic three qualities, we, we rank the streets and, and come up with these lists. So when it comes to asphalt, those are obviously the worst streets that are, that are of the, of the three lists that we have, those are the worst streets. The other two are streets that are in decent condition, that we're trying to keep in good condition by sealing them up. So that's what you'll, those are, the list of streets on the micro-surface and the chip seal are, are those streets that are in pretty, pretty solid condition that we're trying to keep sealed up and keep that way so we don't have to address them in the near future. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Kyle. All right, seeing no questions, all in favor of Resolution 3540? Please say aye.
Yes.
Oppose? Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Kyle. Now we'll have moved to Resolution 3541, and this is microsealing that he made mention of. Councilwoman Nelson, would you read that, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3541, Micro-Surfacing Contract with Missouri Petroleum. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with Missouri Petroleum of St. Louis, Missouri for the 2024 Micro-Surfacing Project, COF 24-04, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion, we pass Resolution 3441 at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Very well, do we have any further questions on that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Now we'll move on to Resolution 3542. Councilwoman McCollum, would you read that, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3542, Chip Seal Contract with Missouri Petroleum. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to the contract with Missouri Petroleum of St. Louis, Missouri for the purpose of providing chip seal services and establish an effective date. I make a motion for Resolution 3542 to be adopted at this meeting.
Second.
Very well, do we have any questions on that? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye, please.
Aye.
Oppose? Again, thank you. We are doing the best with what we can afford with our streets right now, and I think that will, these three resolutions will help us tremendously. Okay, we'll move on to Resolution 3543. And this is the Bartlett and West contract that Anna was referring to on the lead. Councilman Stone, would you read that, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3543, Bartlett and West Contract. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with Bartlett and West of Jefferson City, Missouri, for technical assistance with creating a lead service line inventory and establishing effective date. I make a motion to pass Resolution 34, 3543 at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Very well, do we have any questions about that? I sat in on some of those meetings, and one question I, I had was about personnel to, to check these pipes if need be. And Anna assured me that we could probably handle it within, within-house and not have to hire outside personnel, as well as, Darryl, I think, figured that there's not really going to be that much lead pipe issues that we probably have. But they're going to handle it all in-house, I understand, unless that's changed in the last few days. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor? And I know we'll have to be careful with what information we share and how we share it, but I would like for us to consider if we find service that is lead that leads to a home or a business, that we have a list of resources available to that property owner. But, you know, whatever that might be. However, we're able to share that, at being from the municipality, of course. I don't want to look like we're influencing anybody's decision, but just to make sure that they have all the information and resources and contacts for businesses that could then assist them in, with their property.
Yes, that's been addressed. Go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. So the state of Missouri actually has a format already laid out for us that's in the letter. And so if we find that information, or we find those services that are impacted, we will make sure that they get that information.
Thank you very much.
Okay, seeing, Bill? Seeing no further questions, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. We will certainly move forward with that. Councilman Combs, would you read Resolution 3545, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3545, Bulletproof Vest Grant. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to make application and sign all necessary documents in relation to the Patrick Lay Bulletproof Vest Program Grant through the United States Department of Justice and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to adopt Resolution 3545 at this council meeting.
Second.
Very well. If you have any questions, certainly Chief Ladwick will answer those. This is a grant we've applied for and received the last 25 years, probably, that I know of. And it's an extremely valuable grant for our police officers. I think it's a 50/50 match. And so do you have any questions of the chief?
How many vests will this provide?
We have several that'll be coming up. They're, they're due for replacement because vests have a shelf life. The Kevlar only lasts so long. They recommend replacing every five years. This grant would probably get us 12 to 14 of them with our match.
Will these vests be the new vests that are lighter and, and actually stop more projectiles?
Yeah, it'd be a Level 3 that would go into our outer carriers.
Also, this is really important, too, because when the police feel protected, they also serve the public better, too. So it really helps our, our, our whole city.
It does.
Councilman Washington, do you have a question? Oh, got to see your line. All right, very good. Seeing no further questions, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Very well. Councilman Washington, would you read Resolution 3546 for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3546, State Homeland Security Program, Regionalization of Land. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to make an application and sign all necessary documents in relation to the State Home Security Program Regionalization Grant and establishing effective date. I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3546.
Very well. Okay, does anyone have any questions about this? Chief Ladwick's poised and ready to answer. Seeing no questions, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Very good, thank you. Now we'll move on to ordinances. Uh, first reading, uh, Bill Number 1709, Revised Opening Container, Open Container. This is uh just kind of clean, cleaning up our uh, some of our park ordinances, I believe. And um, I know I had several calls from some of the uh local establishments thinking it may affect them in some way and it doesn't. It, uh, this is totally for uh the inner workings of the city. So, has nothing to do with outside personnel. Councilman Reclu, would you read that, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number 1709, Revised Open Container Possession in Public Places. An ordinance repealing Section 10-10, Possession in Open, Open Containers in the Public Place Fulton City Code is hereby repealed and new Section 10-10, Possession in Open Containers in Public Places is enacted and clear thereof and establish an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill Number 1709 for second reading at the next regular scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Very good. Do we have further questions on this? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Okay, uh, Councilman Henchy, would you read Bill Number 1710 for us? It's a budget amendment.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number 1710, Budget Amendment. An ordinance authorizing amendments to the city of Fulton budget for fiscal year 2024 as outlined in Article 8, Financial Procedures, Section 8.8 Amendments. After the adoption, Paragraph C, Transfer of Appropriations, Fulton City Charter and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill Number 1710 for the third reading. I mean, for the next uh, yeah, where am I? For the second re, for the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, very well. You have any comments on this?
Yeah, so um, as I, as I've mentioned in my notes, um, this is the first time we're doing a budget amendment in the current year, which is great. I'm very excited about that. Um, you guys will still see budget amendments for the 2023 budget when we finalize our audit in the next few months. Um, this budget amendment encompasses some projects that you guys have recently approved. So the SNA project for um Center Street and Jefferson Street, the applicant tracking system and column repair work that was refunded through uh insurance proceeds and then some.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yep.
Mr. Henchy?
Yes.
Mr. Luther?
Yes.
Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Reclu? Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington? Mr. West? Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Seven affirmative, one absent.
Very good, thank you. All right, thank you all for coming tonight.